The Committee of the Whole is now reconvened from recess. We are on round three, the final round, which is for amendments and also the last round for members of the body to discuss the bill or speak on the bill. We have one amendment that's been submitted. The amendment is by Senator Joanne Brown. It is to line 15, page 6. We'll begin with this amendment before I move on to allow the members, other members, to speak on the measure. So this is line 15, page 6, to amend section two of the bill to add a new subsection F to section four of Public Law 3470. Senator Brown, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. And I'm bringing forth this amendment, and it says, just for the public's awareness, it's reporting requirements for status of bond-funded projects. Notwithstanding any other provision of law, rule, or regulation, the authority shall know later than the fifth day following the end of each month, beginning January 31st, 2023, submit a report to the Speaker of Elaheslatour in Guam detailing information regarding the status of bond-funded projects. The report shall include, but not be limited to, information relating to reprogrammed projects, obligated, deobligated, encumbered, unencumbered, and/or expended revenue bonds or proceeds of the Port Authority of Guam. Since the port is asking to have these caps lifted, which were legislatively imposed, I think in all fairness, if we're going to give this authority to the board at the port, that there would be the maximum amount of transparency in how these funds are spent and how they are prioritized, if we're going to give them that flexibility, I think for the members of the legislature and the public to be informed and aware of that, I think is simply fair and allows the transparency with regards to ultimately what is public money. So I'm offering this amendment, Mr. Chair, and I hope my colleagues will support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Brown. On the amendment. Anyone on the amendment? If not, are there any objections to the amendment? Any objections? Seeing none, motion carries. Okay, now we will move on to allow closing remarks on the bill. Senator Duaneus, you're recognized. Senator Torres?
No, Mr. Chair, no comments other than I support this bill as amended and hope that it passes unanimously.
Thank you, Senator Torres. Speaker Trelawney. Senator Perez. Senator Shelton. Senator Ada. Senator Blas. Senator Peter Trelawney. Senator Son Augustine?
Mr. Chair, no other comment other than I support the bill. Thank you very much.
Okay, it's Senator Nelson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to make a motion. We just received a, in our, in our email, the CIP improvement schedule. I believe that was a request from one of our members in the body that, that they see the capital improvement project schedule, and so I just make a motion to add that into the committee report.
Okay, there's a motion to add the CIP schedule to the committee report. On that motion, are there any objections? Seeing none, motion carries. Senator Nelson, you still have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I really don't have anything, just hopefully this bill passes and thanks, and I thank the panel for coming in this morning. That's all.
Okay, thank you, Senator Nelson. This concludes the third and final round. At this time, I'll entertain a motion. Senator Nelson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make a motion to, for bill number 298-36, LS, as amended by the Committee on General Government Operations and Housing, and further amendment amended in the Committee of the Whole with the recommendation of the Committee of the Whole to place on the third reading file.
On that motion, are there any objections?
For voting.
Seeing none, motion carries. All right, we'll take a moment's recess to prepare for the next bill that will be, the bill that will be taken up in the Committee of the Whole. Take a moment's recess.
The committee of the whole is reconvened from recess. We are on bill number 257-36 LS, an act to increase cost of living allowance COLA payments for government of Guam retirees and to appropriate $15,945,600 from the general fund to the Department of Administration for fiscal year 2023. I now call upon the panel guests and for the sergeant-at-arms to swear in our panel guests and for their introduction afterwards.
Okay, sorry, please stand and raise your right hand. Under penalty of perjury, we all affirm that any and all information you provide, whether it be verbally, electronically, and in writing, be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you out. Mr. Chair, on the roll, you may proceed.
Can you, the panel guests, for the record, introduce themselves?
Lester Carlson, BBMR, good afternoon.
And Edward Byrne, Director of Administration.
Senator Tiedegui, you're recognized. Do you have a point of order?
Mr. Chair, I object to the bill on the floor. Moving forward, I object on the bill. I mean, the bill is substantially different compared to what was originally proffered. In fact, it looks identical to a bill that I had introduced, so now it's different, totally different from what the bill that was introduced earlier.
Senator Tiedegui, no motion has been made yet to substitute the bill. We haven't got there yet? At that time, you can object to that motion to substitute the bill.
I'd like to motion now that we do not hear this bill, that the bill goes back to committee.
There's no, we have the original bill before us right now.
Right.
No motion has been made yet to substitute it. Senator Shelton, you are recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I move to substitute bill number 257-36.
There's an objection to, that's a motion to substitute bill 257-36 LS. There's a motion to substitute, there's been objection to the motion.
Point of information, Mr. Chair.
Senator Nelson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is substituted in the committee of the whole. If we could just please, if the sponsor could just tell us the difference between the substitution as from the original bill as proffered.
Senator Shelton.
Sure, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. There were some issues discussed with the bill that we addressed through the substitute version, and mainly the issue was that this, this bill would address an increase to COLA over a period of three years, and it would hold future legislatures to pay for this increase in a budget. However, COLA, as you know, is not codified. We do it by tradition in each budget season, and so we address those concerns by placing it into the Guam code to ensure that we are able to pay out this immediate increase to retirees of the government of Guam. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator Shelton. Senator Nelson, does that satisfy your question?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So just to be clear, it's just to ensure that it is instilled in the, added to chapter eight of Title IV of the GCA to codify it. Okay, thank you.
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you, Senator Nelson. There's been a motion, there's been an objection to the motion, all those in favor of the motion, Senator Speaker Tullai, you're recognized.
Yes, point of information, or point of inquiry, could the author also please describe the difference between what we did during the budget and this bill?
Senator Shelton, do you?
Sure, thank you very much. The substitute version does still need further amendments on the floor, however, yes, as the mover of the question alluded to, we did address this in our most recent budget bill. We accounted for this amount of COLA to give a $200 increase to the $2,000 COLA payments that have been since 2015, and so we no longer need the appropriation for this year, but it will be for COLA moving forward in 2024, 2025, and to end in 2026 at $2,500.
Speaker Tullai.
I just need a little time to review the subbill for myself, but thank you.
Mr. Chair, can I get a quick two-minute recess?
Moment's recess.
Okay, we are back from recess. We've also been joined with the Director of the Retirement Fund, Ms. Paula Blos, and I'll ask the Sergeant Arms at this time to swear you in.
Please stand and raise your right hand. Under penalty of perjury, do you affirm that any and all information you provide today, whether it be verbally, electronically, and in writing, be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? So help you out. Mr. Chair, you may proceed. John Gero.
Thank you, Sergeant Arms. Where we left off, there was a request for a recess so people can review the bill. At this time, there was a motion on the floor to substitute the bill. There is an objection to the motion. All those in favor of the motion, am I the speaker? The motion was to substitute the bill. To substitute Bill 257-36 in the Committee of the Whole. There was an objection to the motion. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by raising your hand. In favor of the motion to accept the substituted version of Bill 257-36 LS? Motion carries. Senator Shelton, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you very much to our colleagues for allowing this substitute version to be placed on the agenda and discussed here in the Committee of the Whole. This was something that we addressed earlier this year in the Budget Act, giving the additional $200 to our COLA recipients, our Gov Guam retirees, an extra $200. And this bill that came before the Budget Act actually raised the cost of living allowance up to $2,500 in 2026. So, the original measure appropriated a little over $15 million, which we were able to accomplish in the Budget Act, to the Department of Administration for the cost of living allowance, and to increase the payment from $2,000 to $2,200 in FY 2023, and then additional payments to continue to increase in $100 increments each year until payments reached $2,500 in 2026. And now, we all know that the cost of living allowance was last raised in 2015 from $1,800 to $200 per retiree. And so, for the last seven years, even with the cost of living rising on island for housing, utilities, insurance, and other goods, our retirees have still only received this fixed amount. And so, the additional $200 that was paid out just a couple months ago brought immediate relief to our retirees while we're faced with all of these challenges throughout the pandemic and the organic rising of cost of goods. And so, we'll be able through this bill to increase COLA just a little bit more every year until we reach $2,500. And that's over 7,000 retirees in the government of Guam who are living on fixed incomes, who are asking us for a little more support to make ends meet. We were able, in this last term, to raise the minimum wage, to give financial assistance to small businesses, and local stimulus to individuals across the island. And this spread over time as a very modest increase to the annual COLA payments that I think is something that we will be able to prioritize as a legislature moving forward. And so, we've heard from retirees on a daily basis asking us about the COLA before the budget bill passed, and we still have them telling us how much that $200 meant to them, how much of an impact that made in their lives. And so, we know an additional $100 until we meet $2,500 in 2026 will certainly be a help to this group of people. And so, I thank you for the opportunity to discuss this bill, and I ask my colleagues for their support for our retirees. Sijus Massey.
Thank you, Senator Shelton. Okay, we are now on the first round of questions. There will be two rounds of questions. Last round will be for amendments and closing statements. For the first round of questions, we'll begin in the... Senator Tidaway.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, can we this time start on the other end of the...
Yes, I'm gonna begin in the front row.
Thank you.
So, we'll begin in the front row. Senator Duennius, you're recognized.
Sijus Massey, Mr. Chairman, and I just want to... I have a couple of questions, but I wanted to preface that I do think that it is timely to, at some point in the near future, contemplate additional resources for, under the COLA structure. Not sure with this bill, but I'll continue to listen and see how it goes forward. But I wanted to make sure that that was clear and on the record. So, my first question will be to BBMR and Mr. Carlson, and thank you for the panel for being here, Paula from Retirement, and of course, BBMR and Department of Administration. So, I direct this question on page four, line 18. So, the sum of $15,945,600 is appropriated from the General Fund to the Department of Administration for fiscal year 2023 to pay said COLA. Now, we have talked about these appropriation schedules now under the structure of doing it in a bill and not doing it under the structure of a supplemental appropriation. Because on its face, and I'll await your description, Lester, on its face, it looks like this would almost be a full appropriation. I'm thinking the intent of this was to account for the amount needed for the additional requirement for what's being added to the COLA and not the entire appropriation as it would be enumerated in the budget.
Thank you, Senator Duennius. You're absolutely correct. The bill was introduced in February of this year. The fiscal note was provided in March, and the fiscal note estimate, using a static number of retirees from the prior fiscal year, pegged the increase at the $15,945,000 amount. Subsequent to that, the legislature passed the COLA for 2023. There were two appropriations, one for $14,822,000, and then the $200 adjustment upwards was a separate appropriation of $1,482,000 for a cumulative total of $16,304,000. You know, in hindsight, the bill was introduced in, almost a year ago. The body went ahead and actually adopted a fiscal '23 amount, which has already been paid out, and that number was $16,304,000.
So, for accounting purposes, and to kind of give back to a couple bills back, or I think a bill prior where we kind of came back into alignment of how we would do that. I think it was the power credit, to where he did it as a supplemental appropriation, or at least an appropriation that showed, and that's why the CARER and everything else reflected on its corrections, that it would adjust totals in terms of the reports. I mean, either we would get, change this perhaps, and amend it to just the required amount to accomplish the increase? Because this almost looks like a double appropriation here at this point, if we're actually appropriating this full amount.
It looks like it, sir, but given the fact that the COLA for '23 was already paid, you know, I think we are all aware that, given the passage of time and the intent and the bill as introduced in February of 2022, that that portion has been accomplished. So, I would suggest that the number, the base number, actually be revised to what the budget bill had, which is $16,304,000, which I confirmed with Director Byrne and Director Blos, that that number was actually very, very accurate. So, if you were going to take that number and then use it as a base to increase for FY '24, '25, and '26, I think we're better served by using the number that was in the budget bill, because that was a very good number.
Yeah, I guess my question fundamentally is, should we clean this up if we do move forward with this bill? Because to me, just the simple language of "is appropriated from the General Fund, Department of Administration for fiscal year 2023," which looks to me like this is what we would be anticipating paying out for the next COLA, because 2022 was paid and that's already identified, basically in the previous A, under 8A105?
Yes, sir. You're right. You're right. It would be absolutely correct to revise and maybe remove FY '23 because it was already done.
Okay, that's the first thing that jumped out at me. Okay, so we'll see how it progresses and what amendments might be prepared. Paula, thank you for being here with us today. This is not, I shouldn't say that. This is not particularly just for this bill, but I wanted to get this on the record because there's been a lot of public discourse back and forth on the General Fund subsidy of this obligation and the Retirement Fund. Is there a number or a report or anything that has been generated by the Retirement Fund that is a total accumulated amount of money that the government of Guam, General Fund, outside of the Retirement Fund, has borrowed, used, or otherwise not reimbursed to the Retirement Fund over the entirety of the existence of the Retirement Fund along with the General Fund?
There was back in, I'm going to say, the 90s, where this body actually legislatively mandated the fund to do the pickup of the COLA in supplemental, paying it over a period of time. So, technically indirectly borrowing from the fund. That was carried on our books as a liability that was due, an accounts receivable due to the fund. But since then, that has been actually paid down to a point where I believe by 20... No, 2032, it should be completely paid off.
Okay, so that's with regard to COLA, correct? And what the Retirement Fund performance was doing?
Yeah, that was a combination of COLA and the supplemental benefit.
Okay. Is there... Is there any other purpose for which the General Fund has used any type of funds or leveraged the retirement fund to any negative balance of the retirement fund outside of COLA and supplemental with the retirement fund?
I can't think of anything.
So no loans, no no loan guarantees, no no leveraging of any of the monies to where the General Fund had a direct benefit?
The only program that I can think of at this time would be the Early Retirement Incentive Program, where individuals were allowed to purchase up to five years' credit, receive the credit without fully having to pay for the credit. And that was a combination of both contributions coming in from the individual employees and the government. Government also amortized that over a period of the unfunded liability term.
I thank you for putting that on the record, because I'm sure there will be bills coming forward that are going to contemplate this in the future. And I think it's important for us as a body now and going into the 37th to understand. And and maybe we'll generate a letter to you to kind of give us a breakdown so we have that understanding going forward. That's it. My questions for the first round, Mr. Chairman Sizou Smasi.
Thank you, Senator Duennas. Senator Torres. Senator Nelson. Speaker Terahy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and to the panel. So we were told that the COLA for FY 2023 has already been paid pursuant to the budget that we just passed, and that there is no longer any appropriation needed for FY '23. Is that correct?
That's correct, Senator.
And so the bill is just confusing to me in that it's continuing to make an appropriation for FY '23. It's saying we're going to appropriate $15.9 million out of the General Fund for fiscal year 2023 to pay COLA, and that is a double appropriation. I don't think there's any way around that. It also says, well, yeah. And then the bill talks about future years, FY '24, '25, '26, and says that this is going to now codify that for all of these future years, we are going to pay COLA in a certain I I agree that we should continue to pay COLA. I think the legislature has done it almost every year that I can recall. I think the amounts that were coming up to do this, I know I've talked to you a lot about this, Paula, Director, and that, yeah, that that's really been the question, right? Is it random? Are we coming up with random numbers? It's not been based on any real cost of living calculations or methodology. I I know I brought it up at the public hearing with Mr. Byrne, that there is a provision in the law, 4GCA 6204, that requires the governor to institute a cost of living and establish the methodology and, you know, determine the feasibility of adopting the federal COLA system. And that was supposed to be considered by the Director of Administration. And at the hearing, they testified that they had not considered that. So we, the legislature, even those before us, have continued to just kind of pick amounts and appropriate what they could. And, yeah, so I I just think that there's provisions in this bill, you know, other provisions as well as in addition to the appropriation that also, the appropriation that's not needed for FY '23, that also talk about reimbursements for FY '23. And I'm pretty sure these are already taken care of as well. Is that right, Mr. Carlson, that the autonomous agencies have already been required to reimburse the General Fund for any COLA paid in FY 2023 for those?
Madam Speaker, if I could address that, yes, that is in general true.
Okay, thank you. Otherwise, the provisions look similar to what we do every year, except that this one is now saying in advance what we're going to pay. And I guess if I want to pull out the fiscal note. So it talks about for FY '23, the impact was $1.45 million to increase it by $200 for that year. And an increasing annually to a cost impact of approximately $3.6 million in FY 2026. This is the fiscal note on the bill. And then it says, "Should this legislation become law, it would authorize approximately $150 million over a five-year period," or $30 million per fiscal year from revenue sources that are deposited into the General Fund for payments to adjudicated World War II claimants from the Guam War Claims Fund." Could you please explain that? I I don't understand why any of this money is coming out of anything related to the war claims, or actually, I don't even see in the bill anything that that appropriates money for any of the future fiscal years. The fiscal note talks about getting it from business privilege taxes, Section 30, and then that World War Claims Fund.
Thank you, Speaker. The last paragraph was just to give a 30,000-foot view to the body.
A what?
A 30,000-foot view, an overall view of other bills that we've done fiscal notes for that contemplate general fund funding. That's all it was, just reminding the legislature of of other issues that, you know, were under consideration, not 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 taking this by itself, but also looking at other things. That's all it was, just informational.
All right. What, why does the fiscal note reference Bill 220 in that third paragraph?
Again, same thing I just said. You're, we're talking about future obligations of the General Fund. So we just wanted to nudge people nicely and remind them that there are other issues and measures that we had been asked to provide fiscal notes for, so that people understand cumulatively what that total might be. That's all.
All right. And so does this bill appropriate anything for fiscal year '24, '25, or '26?
Madam Speaker, that'll be your last questions for this round. Go ahead and proceed, Mr. Lester.
It would be, yeah. It would.
It would be?
And the fiscal note basically gives an idea, per fiscal year, of the of the increase. So for...
Right, but does the bill appropriate for FY '24, '25, or '26 was the question? That was the question.
Okay. So Lester, you can answer the question, and then we'll move on.
It contemplates raising the COLA, but it doesn't appropriate the money.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Senator Perez, do you have any questions?
I'd like to yield my time to the Speaker.
All right. As long as you understand, you owe your time. Madam Speaker, you have, you have any questions? Time has been yielded to you.
So we have obviously no objection to funding FY '23. We funded it. It's done. It's been paid. And I want to thank you for paying that early. That's great. It's all done. I have no objection to increasing COLA for these three years. I I know that there have been other proposals as to the methodology that we use to get to the amount and who gets paid, those in need or those or just everybody, right? That's also been a debate. But, yeah, my concern is just, it's just really technical issues with the bill that it doesn't, it doesn't show, we're like double appropriating for FY '23, and then we have no appropriations for '24, '25, '26. We're making these promises. We're going to pay that. It's kind of, I don't know, I'm looking at this unfunded mandate statute that says we're not supposed to pass bills that we are not funding. So I'm just going to take a look at that, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Senator Shelton, do you have any questions? None? Senator Adda, do you have any questions? None? Senator Pito, do you have any question? None? Senator Blas, do you have any question? None? Oh, you do? Okay. I thought you were waving, and I was going to wave you on. Thank you.
I'm waving to say hi. I'm saying, waving to say, yes, I got plenty questions. First off to the panel, thank you very much for for being here. Okay? And, yes, my question first off is, you know, I'm sorry, Ms. Paula, for you being here. I don't have any questions for you right now, okay? So you can relax. Lester, page four, line 18. "The sum of $15,945,600 is appropriated from the General Fund to the Department Administration for fiscal year 2023 to pay said COLA." This then, this language appears to then, am I correct in saying that this language appears to then add to the 2023 budget that was already passed?
Senator Blas, again, the bill was introduced in February of 2022. Subsequently, the legislature addressed the COLA requirement for this fiscal year. So the, there needs to be some technical corrections to remove any references to fiscal 2023.
Okay, because if we don't remove that, what does this do to the budget as?
I'm sure you you will remove it, but it's not going to prompt us to do anything. So we know what the body did, and we know what the intent is. And if it passes in this form, we would ignore the '23, but...
Okay, let's say we ignore the 2023, but then, as if it was to be to be passed, what language is necessary for it not to even bother the 2023? My concern here is that this is creating an unbalanced budget.
No, sir. Any reference to 2023 should be struck, and, you know, 2024 should be put in its place.
You know, it's kind of a weird predicament situation we're in as far as committee of whole, because I agree with you, and that's, thank you, that's the answer that I was looking for absent this is going to, if this was to be affected by 2023 or have to be paid in 2023, fiscal year 2023, out of the General Fund. We don't even have a revenue source on this. Am I correct?
Yeah, yeah. You're correct.
Yeah. Okay. So, you know, I mean, I'm looking at this and and and, you know, if the corrections aren't made, my fear is two things. One, we then create an unbalanced budget for fiscal year 2023, and then we don't identify a funding source for this, and it's an empty promise. Anyways, I guess this would go the same then for page five, line three and four? That would have to be stricken as well, right?
Yes, sir. The line three, it should be September 30, 2023, and on line four, it should be, again, November 1, 2023, for fiscal year 2024.
Okay, thank you very much. With regard to, I guess, the mechanism, how this would provide $100 more per year up to $2,500 by 2026? What is your interpretation, or how do you interpret then after 2026, what the COLA amounts will be paid after 2026?
It would probably remain at $2,500.
So this is substantially more than $14 million, right?
When it hits that level? Yes.
So this does not go back, revert back to, so just to be clarified, to be clear, it is that this does not revert back in fiscal year 2027, does not revert back to $2,000 per year, per year. It then remains constant after that to $2,500.
I believe that's correct, sir.
And, you know, I apologize, Lester. I thank you for, you know, I, the interpretation is the same thing that I have, and I I apologize for putting you in that predicament to be able to do that. But I think it is necessary, Mr. Chair, to be able to say that, you know, there's a number of places in this bill, first off, that, granted, you know, the original portion, the original bill was introduced back in February? But this is a substituted version of the bill, introduced today, that should have been, just taken into account a lot of that stuff, which really limits the kind of discussions that we can have with the panel, because it needs to be corrected before we can even talk about it even more. Just in the discussions, we were recognized. The $14 million that we're attempting to, I don't even know if it's appropriate, appropriations, because I don't see an appropriations measure here, is woefully insufficient to cover what this is going to be covering past 2026. Then it gets to the point of where, if we have the ability to be able to dictate to future legislatures as to what's going to happen. My time's up, Mr. Chair. I don't have to, you don't have to score me. I'll keep my mouth shut.
Thank you very much. Senator Tele, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good afternoon, everyone. Good afternoon, Paula. Thank you for coming here. Sorry we had to pull you out and trying to get you here earlier, but anyways, Paula, can you tell me where did this method, what methodology was used to determine the proposed Do you know how they came up with this amount?
In reference to...
The bill, well, the $200 that was done in 2023, and then raising it an additional $100 in 2024, and then this this money, amount of money, do you know how it was determined? Was there a methodology to this, or do you know of any methodology that was used?
It wasn't, it didn't come from us, so we didn't provide a methodology for it.
Okay. Mr. Carlson, was there a methodology to this that you know of that came up to these determined amounts?
It's on the fiscal note, the second paragraph. Would you like me to read it?
On the methodology?
Yes.
Okay. Based on the price index, is that the one you're talking about, or?
Based on the Bureau's estimates and utilizing a static number of 7,248 retirees calculated using the FY '22 COLA appropriation of $14,496 in public law 36-54...
using the FY22 COLA appropriation of $14,496 in public law 36-54 divided by the current COLA amount of $2,000 per retiree, the cumulative projected cost impact in '23 to '26 is approximately 10.1 million for executive lines slash department revenues. And then you can see on the next page, the graph that shows you the breakdown using the static number for...
Mr. Carlson, that's not the, my question, I understand how you got the amount that would be appropriated every year for that. I understand that part, that wasn't my question. My question is, the $100 or the $200 that was increased for FY23 and then increasing it another $100 the next year and the next year? That's my question. Do you know why we're using 200 and then why are we using 100 every thereafter?
Senator, we just did the fiscal note based upon the bill...
How much it's going to cost us, right? Yeah, no, that's, so my question, then you don't know. There was no methodology on how we came up with $200 or how we came up with $100 thereafter.
You would have to defer to the author, ma'am.
Okay. Paula, you know, we look to you as someone who's well-versed in retirement, of course, and I'm sorry you can't see me, the chair is in the way there, but that's okay. You know, we look to you for information. I'm sure you go to seminars or, and yearly look at data and information that other jurisdictions are doing for theirs, especially on the federal government side. Can you tell me during, on the federal government side, do they yearly adjust their annuities for their retirees on a yearly basis?
I'm not familiar if they do, although I've heard from other federal retirees that they do get a COLA adjustment every year.
Every year, so it's adjusted. Okay, so that's done and that's basically done on, and the calculation and methodology on that is usually done through basically the cost of living in that particular region. California would be totally different from somebody who retired and lived in Texas. So there is some type of cost index that is used to determine that, you know? I think here in this bill, it's just pulling a rabbit out of the hat to determine this amount and we can sorely under appropriate or provide an increase to our retirees who are on a fixed income, that this would not even dent anything for them, you know, for, especially those who are living or annuity that's under 30,000 to 40,000. It was mentioned earlier that in FY26, one of my colleagues mentioned that it would reach at 2,515, then what happens after that? There's nothing in here that says that it's to continue or to be adjusted based on anything but find another hat and pull another rabbit out to determine what that number would be. Paula, can you tell me what's the difference between adjustment, cost of living adjustment and a cost of living allowance?
I interpret it to mean a cost of living adjustment would be the amount that would be added to the base annuity on an annual basis going forward and a cost of living allowance would be just that, an allowance for that particular...
Almost like just a gift, right? An allowance?
An allowance.
It's like a gift. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. We will now proceed to our second round, but I noticed that Senator Brown's here. Senator Brown, did you want to ask any question because I know you, you're the last one and I just want to give you the opportunity to ask a question.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I won't belabor, but I just wanted to follow up on the question I have, the speaker had touched base and Senator Tello. I understand the issues of concern with the appropriation language in the bill, but is that something that retirement fund would be open to? Is that something that could be looked into with regards to providing, and again, you know, in all disclosure, I myself, I'm a retiree, in terms of actually putting a scale that maybe would more appropriately address the needs of our retirees out there, particularly those that, you know, we always talk about those that retired many, many years ago and the income level that they were earning. I mean, it's just compared to, just look at the last three years going through this pandemic of the incredible price, you know, the price increases that we're experiencing the stores, gas, power, I mean, everything that has come up. That really makes it very difficult for them to survive and, you know, is it equitable that everyone across the board, you know, receives the same amount? My immediate family has never worked for the government of Guam. They've either been in the military or worked for federal civil service and annually, you know, we receive every, every, every year in the mail, they notice to my immediate family members that this is your, this is your cost of living increase for this fiscal year. And that's it. There's no, no politics involved in that process. It's simply, this is what has been determined to be that amount. And I, I wonder is there a way we can de-politicize the COLA process because it's something that many of our retirees definitely need? You know, for many of them, they definitely supplement their income with this, anticipate this every year. But is that something that can be pursued so it's something also most equitable, particularly for those in the lower income brackets? And then it's not something, you know, the legislature, maybe this is the amount that's calculated according to this scale, you know, this is the amount that the legislature needs to appropriate rather than this appearance that we're somehow giving a gift to the retirees and taking credit for it, that we're the ones that are providing that appropriation. So I want to get your feedback. You've been at the retirement for many years. I know you've dealt with this issue often, but I wanted to get your perspective. Is that something that may be the best way to go about properly addressing the needs of our retirees in our community? And like I said, I think more importantly, de-politicizing this whole process.
If you're looking at a scale, more than 50% of our retirees and survivors make less than 40,000. So if you use a percentage based on the annuity across the board, then of course, those in a higher annuity bracket will make more in the allowance than somebody below 40. I mean, I'm open to, to helping, you know, and try to find a solution that this body would like so that we can make it affordable and equitable, you know, for, for both the government as well as the retirees. But right now, I'm not equipped with being able to provide anything other than that.
Well, I appreciate your response. I mean, hopefully, I don't know if this is the vehicle or another legislation may be the vehicle to facilitate. I appreciate your, your very honest, direct response on the matter. I mean, I've heard over the years that the amounts have fluctuated, that, you know, they've gone as high as what I've heard is $6,000 a year, annual COLA versus where we are now at, you know, now 20, I guess this year, 2,200. So I think at least that way, our retirees have an anticipation of what to expect and as I said, I think there's a need to have a system that's set up so that those that are in the most need will get the most help. Those that are, you know, least positioned of need, they may not need that help as much. And more importantly, we just de-politicize the process because I think it's very much become a political process of going through these annual appropriations and certainly wanting to take credit that, you know, I'm the one who introduced or I'm the one who supported, I'm the one who voted for the COLA bill and just simply allow the process for those that need to receive their COLA and they've, they've earned it. They are, especially those, like I said, in the lower income that are most in need of it and it's just not something that we have to debate and, and, you know, just pull something out of the air and say, well, this year we have this much, next year, who knows what that amount, who knows when the amount's going to be two or three years from now versus this way the system's set up. So I appreciate it. Hopefully, we'll be able to have dialogue in the future with regards to the means that can be put in place to facilitate such a process for our retirees. Thank you very much for your response. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the opportunity to comment and ask a question.
Thank you, Senator Brown. Colleagues, we will now go into the second round and we'll begin with Senator Torres. Do you have any questions for the panel? None? Senator Nelson? None? Madam Speaker, do you have any questions for the panel?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, I'm just looking at the social security and I know that this year they had increased their cost of living allowance quite significantly compared to previous years based on their, I want to say, the Consumer Price Index. That's what I'm trying to prove that, but yeah, the Consumer Price Index for urban wage earners and clerical workers is what they use. And they said the 2022 COLA was so large because prices of goods and services have significantly increased in the past year due in part to extreme weather and COVID-19 outbreaks which have driven up energy prices and strained the world supply chains. And I remember when I looked at this, trying to write one for Guam that would tie it to a Consumer Price Index for Guam, which actually is calculated by the Bureau Statistics and Plans and they've got it for different categories. And so, yeah, we, and then, you know, looking at that provision where DOA was supposed to look at the way they calculated the federal COLA and also the other bill that had said it would be linked to the Consumer Price Indexes for housing rentals, healthcare, food, transportation, utilities and fuel costs to get Guam's cost of living. And I think that's reasonable, of course, I think it makes sense. I'm not sure what the amounts would have come up to. I would need you math, you budget experts to calculate that, but, or, or over at the retirement fund, but, but I do see what you're saying, Director Blas, that there are 80% of our retirees are making less than $40,000 on Guam. And so that is why we were very united to grant the $200 increase this year, particularly with our common knowledge of the increasing cost of living on Guam, particularly this year and the last year. And I think it's continuing into the next year, if I'm not mistaken. And so that's great, of great concern. So I have no objection to, you know, increasing COLA. Yeah, I just think, yeah, we're supposed to, if we're going to increase it for these three years, find a funding source. 2GCA 9101 restricts us from putting bills that do not have funding sources tied to these measures that are going to impact the revenue or the expenditures of the government. That and of course, to remove all the references to 2023 and make sure we're not double appropriating, make sure we are not requiring double reimbursement and make sure that this language is going to work going forward, that it actually, like I'm thinking, we should amend the bill to remove not just A105B as Mr. Carlson suggested, but also Part A, because that is just a specific amount for 2022 and gives the governor authority to pay that. We've already done that for 2023 and I just wonder that without A and B, if the language continues to allow payment, I mean, I know we've said amounts, but does it continue to allow payments? And I'm thinking, the way it defines retiree on A102E says that anyone enrolled with the government of Guam by September 30 of the prior fiscal, it's supposed to say year, I think, and is eligible to receive COLA in the current fiscal year. Ms. Blas, is it every retiree who is entitled to COLA or only those who retired on certain dates?
It would be anyone who retired for this FY23 COLA, it was anyone who retired as of 9/30.
September 30th, so for every year, it's anyone who had retired as of September 30 of that year?
Exactly.
Okay, so they've never restricted it, every, every year, every retiree as of September 30 has been covered?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. And, yeah, so that, that would be my question. I do agree that, you know, when we get to 2026, instead of a random number, that we tie it to something so that it's predictable for budget purposes, so that it's also just tied to the cost of living as was intended. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Senator Perez, do you have any questions for the panel? None? Okay. Senator Shelton, you have any questions? None? Senator Brown, do you have any questions for the panel? None? Senator Adda, do you have any questions for the panel?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Lester, you said you were using a static number of, right, of 7248, 7,248 retirees to come up with the calculation for, I guess, what the total amount would be for the retirement. Do you know, or, how many individuals would be eligible to retire in, I guess, the coming years and does that take into account?
No, Senator. Again, the methodology that we use was just a static number, just to give you guys an idea of what the cumulative cost would be using a static number. You're correct in that every year, there are numerous people who join the ranks of retirement, but there are also people who are retirees who pass away, their benefits go to their survivor and then the survivor passes away and then we, from then on, we don't have any obligation. So I think, you know, the best person to ask about, you know, what the year-over-year increase may be and how she thinks that might evolve is Director Blas.
I see. Okay, so, I wouldn't want to, if you can answer that question, I mean, I know there's, you know, people come onto the, onto the rolls and get off on the rolls, so what is the, I guess, the, how do you say, maybe the...
The average?
The average of those that get on the rolls every year?
Right now, I believe we're averaging about 150 to 200. And the DB plan, the old plan, a majority of those in that plan right now have 30-plus years. So, and we still have about 1,200 people in that plan.
And then falling off the rolls now?
The ones falling off would be like Mr. Carlson had said, those who were survivors that have passed away, you know, because it doesn't get passed on if they remarry. Depending on the year, we had a very different year in 2020 and 2021 because there were quite a number of people that did pass away, but other than that, it's not a complete wash. There's more added on than taken off.
Okay. So then the increase in Lester would be increased to the general fund into adding to the COLA on every year, '24, '25 and '26, right?
You're correct. So we didn't add anything. We just used a static number.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair, that's the only question I have.
Thank you, Senator Adda. Senator Tello, do you have any questions, ma'am, for the panel?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, I thank the panel for being here and it's, I know it's after five o'clock, so I'm not going to belabor this. You know, I completely support the, the increase needed to reflect the true cost of living here on Guam and, and to do it annually. I think everybody knows that I've pushed for this issue for a while, this situation, to not be dangling a carrot in front of any of the retirees' face during an election time or any time thereafter. I think we should just move that out of the equation here and start using methodology and equations that are more correct to those who are on a fixed income on this island. Everybody here agrees that there should be some kind of increase. It should be. We don't want to go back to the days where, if I'm not mistaken, Paula, wasn't, once upon a time, it went from 1,300 at one year and then it went to about 1,800 the next year and, can you give me some examples, Paula, of like how it fluctuated?
I believe when COLA was first... I believe when COLA was first provided, it started out as 1,800, and then, and that was for a few years. It dropped to 1,100, and that was kind of, you know, stagnant for a while, and then one year, it actually dropped to $750.
That's right, 700.
And then jumped to 1,800, and then the last, maybe eight years, 10 years, 2,000?
So it does, and I don't think that, I think if we had a group of individual people getting together to determine what is the true cost of living on this island and determine what is a price index that is used to assess those who are making, you know, 40,000 and below, and then provide a sliding scale for those 40 and above, those who make 50, 70, 80,000 dollars a year in annuities, which should not be the same as those who, who make below 40,000. As you and I discussed, 40,000 is pretty much that, that brink of individuals who live in a precarious situation where it's, it's difficult to survive, especially in this day and age with the costs going up. And I'm not seeing it, any of the costs going down anytime soon. But I greatly appreciate you being here, and of course, you know, BB Mar as well as DOA. Merry Christmas to you, to you all, and hopefully, we can, in next term, we can come up with a bill that basically justifies this increase to those who really need it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Senator Titerwee. Senator, Senator Blas, Primo, you have any questions?
You kind of hesitated there, Primo. What's going on?
I had to make sure you were still there.
Okay, just a couple of questions. Mr. Carlson, going back to the figure that's provided as far as the, you know, the amount, 15,945,600, what does that number represent? Is that the number, the total amount that's necessary to cover the fiscal years up till 2026?
No, sir. If you look at attachment one to the fiscal note, what we did was we took an estimate from the 22 amount that was paid, which was 14.4 million dollars, and we estimated that the impact of going up 200 dollars would result in about 1.5 million dollars. So you went from 14,496,000 dollars in FY '22 to an estimate of 15,945,600 dollars in fiscal 2023, and that's, that's where that number came from. It came from an estimate that, that we did. However, I did mention to the body that in the budget bill, the cumulative appropriations for COLA in FY '23 amounted to 16,304,000. So.
Okay, just for point of clarification, because again, this is not really clear on this, on this bill. So this figure presented on page four, line 19 of 15,945,600, is the amount that is necessary to make, to provide the additional, I mean, the total COLA payment for fiscal year 2024?
No, sir. That amount is referenced to pay the amount for 2023. As I stated earlier, the bill was introduced in February.
Right, and for the purposes of this, because this bill's going to have to go through some major overhaul, and I'm just wondering whether that major hole includes having to change that figure? If we were to then, so, because 2023, FY 2023 is already done, it's taken care of. So this is on the assumption this is for FY 2024. And in that assumption of that this is for FY 2024, that 15,945,600 is insufficient, based on estimates.
That would be correct.
And then, based on the conversation you had previously with Senator Ada, it would then also have to be increased for the preceding years, 2025 and 2026, and basically upward scale?
It would be cumulatively, yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Merry Christmas, guys.
Thank you, Senator Blas. Senator Teller, do you have any questions for this, for the panel?
Oh, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm just a little bit concerned now. I want to address my question to the Director of Retirement, because in a few, few more days, we're going to be hearing Bill 34636LS. And I don't know probably you're familiar, because, familiar with that bill, because retirement was the one that made the study. And I predict that if that bill passes, we're going to triple the numbers of retirees. So I, I need to get your advice on just what we need to do, or do you have an idea of just how much of our retirees that are going to apply for the retirement? And what is, is Bill 34636 going to do to the retirement program that we have right now, comparing it to 157, I believe?
Senator Teller, you're busy asking for a comparison between your bill and this bill, correct?
I just want to find out, Mr. Chair, because I know there's going to be a negative impact if that bill, if Bill 34636LS passes. And we're talking about how many 700 retirees we have right now? And I would say that if that bill passes, we're going to have at least 700 that were, that will be willing to retire under that program, 346-36LS. So I just want to know what would be the impact. I know it's going to be, there's going to be a negative impact on that one if that bill passes, and I just want to be sure that if we go on with that, with that, with that bill, I just want to know what, what impact would it do to, you know, in as far as funding is concerned? Because I know there's going to be a lot of, a lot of people that will retire. Remember now that that Bill 34636LS, the people that have been, that reached the age of 55 and put in 25 years' service, they, they're able to retire. And those that put in 57 years of service, and if they're 57, all they have to do is meet the two-years requirement, and they can retire. So I'm just a little concerned about that.
Are you asking in terms of the COLA bill? How many more?
I'm asking in terms of what would it do to the budget? Would it increase so much?
I'm not quite sure in terms of the number of people that would actually avail themselves to retire right away. Just based on the data that, that I was able to see, it wasn't that many that would be eligible right away to retire. I'm, that's why I, there's only, just on uniform personnel, I believe there was only 600 and some that were actually captured under the DB 175 plan.
Yes, I understand that, but the bill is not only for the law enforcement. I'm talking about the entire government of Guam employees after that.
Okay, so the entire government of Guam employees, non-uniform, still have to meet the threshold of the age 62.
Not according to 336-36.
Yes, it is.
No.
Yeah.
No, the, if you're 55, if you're 55 years of age and you accumulated 25 years of service, you can retire.
You can retire at 55 with 25, but you retire with a reduction, and that is for non-uniform personnel.
No, but the annuity would, would, would increase, right?
The annuity is based on the number of years of service, so if somebody had a minimum of 25 years, it would be based on 25 years, and it would still be pegged at 1.75% for each year.
1.75?
Yeah. Now, if they retire at 55, there is a reduction in that percentage of 6% for every year.
No, but later on in time, the annuity would go from 1.75 to 2.75.
That only happens if you're more than 25 years of service.
If you're more than 25 years of service.
And that is, that's, that was intended for those who made Guam a career, pretty much, anybody over 25 years of service.
So there's not that much to think about, the impact, the negative impact in as far as financing?
Well, the, the way that the actuary looked at it, based on the three proposals, combining them together, the, the cost would be offsetted by the contributions coming in from the new DB 175 members. And so on, at the onset, it was intended to be funded already. That's the reason for the nine and a half percent.
Okay, because I was thinking, you know, that particular bill is not, there's no appropriation for that bill.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Is that it, Senator, Senator Teller?
That's it, my favorite.
Thank you. I am cool, anyway, my colleagues, we have completed second round. I'll now release, we will recess. I will leave now the panel, but we will recess until tomorrow morning at 10:00 a.m. Please have, be safe. Thank you.